I don't know if it might be the whole system.
Hope so. Our recipient of the character award from East Elementary is not able to be here this evening. So we'll pick that one up next week along with another, next month along with another. Instead, let's bring our recipient for West Elementary.
I'm so excited to introduce Cameron Cantrell to you. He is such a joy to have in my class and he was actually our pep kid of the month back in October for habit to begin with the end in mind. And he is a great representation of that and he's always leads by example. He's the first one to offer help to a classmate in need. He's growing so much in his speech and his reading and his leadership skills. And I'm so proud of all that he's accomplished and I know he's going to do great things.
From Swain Middle School, Liam Green.
I am reading from Ms. Hyatt. She is at the Rosman softball game. So this is what she asked me to say about Liam, who I adore. First, I am sorry I'm not there to brag on this young man this evening. When I think of a leader, someone who serves quietly with integrity comes to mind. Someone who leads by example and knows, knows you do not have to be the loudest in the room. Someone who will do the job that no one else wants to do. Liam fits this, fits this definition perfectly. He always has a great attitude when I see him and is such a sweet and caring young man. He works hard, gets the job done, and never fails to make others laugh. I love seeing his passion lived out and him working to meet his personal goals. I know Liam will go far in life and be an inspiration to others. Ms. Hyatt.
And from the high school, David Ortega. That's all right. You are the man for the young.
We'll wing it. Here's what I can tell you about this young man, what I know about him. One, he's there every day. He always has a smile on his face. And this year he wrestled, I think, for the first time, dislocated his elbow and he came day in, day out just to be with his teammates. It didn't slow him down at all. He's a pleasure to have in our school. When we had him in weightlifting, he's always just got this good look on his face. Okay? But that's what I know about this young man. Okay?
Thanks to all of you for being here tonight. We're going to get into the business portion. And if you want to stay, you're welcome to. You can stay all night. But at this point, if you don't want to, you're excused. Oh, come on.
Them kids probably been sitting all day.
We ready to move forward with the discussion?
Yes, we are.
All right. In the fall, we learned that we have been blessed with a record number of state track championships. In fact, our girls have accumulated, I think, six, if I'm not mistaken. Before this run, we were generally accustomed to having several seasons, if not years, between the need to raise funding for championship rings. Neil shared with me today that the cost for rings for a track season is currently running somewhere between $7,000 and $20,000 a season, depending upon the size of the team. He's going to share a proposal to proactively approach championship ring funding for track. Now, as Neil comes to the microphone, I don't know if we have had an opportunity to publicly congratulate him for his recent induction. Neil is now a member of the North Carolina Athletic Directors Hall of Fame, and that is well-earned. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Like I said, we are blessed right now in state championships right now. We did also just have a wrestler also. In the past, when we won states, we won three in a row in the eighties in football. And then we didn't win another one until the '01 team. And then you went to '04, and then went to '11, and then you went 16 for track. And now all of a sudden, we're at six in a row. When you're trying to raise money for rings, you win that one, people are going, it's most time, we need donation. Okay? You get to two and three, and all of a sudden, those donations become a little harder to come by. They want something. Last year, we did the email fundraiser, had great success. I think we were over $14,000 for that. But once again, we were just asking for money. So this year, we're coming up with an idea. We got, actually stole it from TC Robertson Baseball. They do, it's called a silent auction. And we're going to try to have it at casino. We've been in talks with them in May. And what it is, is we'll require the kids to a little bit, have a little bit of teeth in it also, where they're going to be required to bring a gift or an item or something they can get worth at least $50 or more. We've got some that can paint. We've got some that I have contact that we can have an Indian basket made or something made. We've got others that could give us something else. We've already had some rafting trips donated to us from out at Nantahala. This weekend, we received a two-day weekend in Florida at a condo and a seven-day weekend at condo that we'll be able to auction off at the beach. So things are coming in for us. Our goal, we put 30,000 because we don't know. TC Robertson annually raises about 40 grand. Right now, we probably spent about 35 grand last year. Cross-country was around 7,000. This year, our ring for this year's indoor, I think it's at 14,500 right now with the wrestler included in that. That does not include the sweatshirt that I get them or the patches that go with that. Okay? So with this, it's great to win them, but you got to pay for them. Okay? So with the auction, what our goal is, is to build an account. We had a ring fund at one time that had a lot of money in it. It was built up from the '11 team. The '16 team didn't have to raise a lot of money because there was some left in it. And then when we started winning the tracks, it disappeared in a hurry. So whenever we didn't have enough at one point, athletics had to take that over. And we just do not make enough at gates to take that on. That's quite a bit of money. And these girls, we could be like some schools, you go to some schools and the parents pay for their rings. I don't believe that we can do that here at Swain. I think if they've worked that hard, give it to us, it's our responsibility to try to raise that money to get them those rings. So that is our goal with that. You know, it is, my wife's kind of heading that with the parents' help. And then that way, our track coaches continue to coach. We're going to call it the Runners Club because we want to make it annually.
Good.
And what, that'll entail cross-country, track, and indoor track. Because if it gets, we've told them, if it's over 30,000, anything over 30,000, they can take and use it for their program. Okay? Because track is expensive. You buy a pole vault pit, it's 18 grand. Okay? We also have opportunities where our indoor track is ran up here called Polar Bear Meats because they're outside. But we need to get it indoors and we have to go to Winston-Salem to get the nearest indoor place. So that's an overnight trip. That costs money also. Okay? We've been invited to some things that we can't afford to go to. Our cross-country team, girls team, was invited to California for the biggest race. We can't afford that. Okay? Our indoor, our outdoor track team and indoor team was just invited, certain members of them were invited to go to the pin relays. That's of all track meets the ultimate. But that's one other one that right now, we can't afford to do. If they get their amount up there and that money's there, then we can do that. Matthew Gray just went to New York and did the Nike. His parents, with the help of Nike, paid for that one. We have about seven going to Adidas this weekend in Virginia Beach, and their parents are taking care of that one. So our goal is to eventually have enough money in that account to where if we need it, we can use it for that. Okay? Because if we're going to be good and you want to sharpen the saw, you got to go against the best. And sometimes, Matt Gray, I'll use him example, he can jump here all day long in the conference and he's not going to be pushed. You're talking about a kid ranked fourth in the nation. He's got to go places to do that. Has it paid off? Yes. He's got a full ride either Carolina or App, whichever one he chooses. We've got another pole vaulter female that's got offers on the table from App, UNCA, and that. We got a My Hicks that's going to Western. So those things are paying off, going to a race against other people. But it does cost. Okay? So that is our goal with this auction, and it is to use it for that.
I really, I applaud the fact that this is a proactive approach because we have found ourselves kind of trying to react lately, and that has put us in some binds. And I'm grateful to Coach Blankenship and Coach Roper, who I believe has also had his hand deeply in this.
Coach Payne.
And Coach Payne for taking this, this opportunity to try and take care of our runners, who have shown tremendous success across the board. Any, any questions?
You said that was at least $50, and in May, is that what you're going to try to have, did you say?
May 5th, I think. May 5th or 6th, we got to work out a date with the casino.
Yeah, I'll try to get something.
Yep.
So.
I mean, I think what's amazing about the whole thing he's talking about is this is a 1A school.
Yes.
I don't know of any 1A school that does as much for our kids as this, these schools. I'm telling you, it's, it just blows my mind how many things are out there for children. And they benefit. Like he said, they benefit in a lot of ways, but they also benefit personally. And I'm proud of what they do. It's just unbelievable, the amount they do.
Well, I don't think that our wrestling program has access it does without going places.
True.
I mean, they've got to go places and do that. I don't think Tice wins if he just stays around here and wrestles against people. He's got to go places to do that. We've got to put him in situations to do that.
That's true. What's his last name?
Nadeau.
Thank you.
So the 30,000 that we're, or whatever it was that we're trying to raise, that's not for anything that we've already done. That's looking forward, right? That's not to pay.
Yeah, well, we have a, we have a little bit left over from cross-country that will help. And then this will go to pay for the.
In other words, we don't have any rings that need to be paid for.
No.
So we're just, we're like, like you said, being proactive.
Cross-country's paid for.
Okay.
Yes.
And given to them already.
Yes.
Have we, like, is there a plan to look at that for all those sports? I mean, I think this is a great song.
Well, this will be a ring fund. It won't just be for track.
It will not be.
Once we build this up, it's called the ring fund.
Okay. So tracks kind of starting, launching?
They're kind of building, they're kind of setting the tone for it.
Okay.
In the past, the one, ring funded, was started in 2011. Football kind of put it over the edge with the money they raised.
Okay. So any team could contribute and fundraise for the same.
Yes.
That's cool. That's cool.
Again, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
And we've learned though, with fundraising, it's just like the card sales. All teams could sell the cards. And we tried that one year. It doesn't work well that way. Sometimes you just need one group to do that because then you just spearhead a certain group. And then you do it that way.
Different.
Yeah.
Different ideas for different teams and different seasons. That's really cool. I had no idea what rings cost.
Well, it's 250 for the team rings and it's probably, I think it's 290 for the individuals because we don't make as many of those. And I think we have 11 individuals we got to buy this year.
It's a good problem.
It's a good problem to have.
It is a good problem, yes. Anything else? Coach, thank you and congratulations again.
Thank you.
It's a well-deserved honor.
Thank you for giving me a stay for the baseball.
If you want to, sure.
And then I'll be back.
All right. If y'all don't know, the middle school has a track meet today.
Yeah.
At the high school. And they were running in the snow. But that doesn't mean we're getting out of school. I just want to put that out in public now. Okay? We've had some concern about baseball fields lately, or about the baseball field of the high school. And I want to give you a little bit of background on that and where we are. I'm going to start by saying this, that our home games will be played in Swain County. Okay? That really has never been in question, as far as I'm concerned. But we have worked exceptionally hard with maintenance and also with our athletic, athletic department to make sure that that happens. I don't know if you know this or not. If you haven't been around Swain County and been paying attention, you may not. But our baseball and softball fields were originally developed somewhere around 2001, 2002. The land on which they were built, and I'm using this term loosely, would be, would have been considered to be marsh. It was soft, with a lot of water in the back. As they were developing the, the fields, they put drainage tiles underneath that are galvanized. And the purpose for those drainage tiles is because there are two streams that are running down through there, plus all of the storm runoff is coming down through there as well, and then goes down to Bryson Branch. The tiles that are galvanized that are under that field have been failing for some time. We also had one of those tiles, if I'm not mistaken, fell up at the parking lot and created a sinkhole. Those are going to be continuing needs and concerns as we move forward. Now, we've tried to address those, those tile issues, some over the past year or two. But the problem is, in addressing those, we have also run into the irrigation system that was installed underneath there. And that irrigation system has been torn up in several different places. There's a day coming where if we continue to use those as softball and baseball fields, we're really going to have to address that so that we can make sure that we have good drainage and also good irrigation. Since those fields have been created, our baseball staff and our maintenance team have been working together pretty, pretty hard to make sure that those fields are maintained. Our coaching staff is in charge of making sure, and Coach Blankenship, if I say this incorrectly, I want you to, to correct me, please. Our coaching staff is in charge of maintaining the field inside the fence. Okay? Inside the fence. Everything else that has to do with general, with infrastructure issues goes to our maintenance program, our maintenance department. And so they have to work together on that. When Coach Verano came on board, he immediately began to work on and work towards improving the field, and he has worked tirelessly to get that done. Coach Blankenship said he has worked himself to death to do that. Our maintenance staff has been working with him, and especially in the past couple of two or three weeks, to make sure that all of the pieces and all of the parts are in place. As they began to work on that, we had some significant issues with rain. That's whenever we've seen some of the major rain issues, one of which was the deluge of a couple of weeks ago. I don't know if y'all have paid attention to the weather this winter, even though we haven't had snow, it has been exceptionally wet. Those fields don't drain very well sometimes. And so that has helped put things behind, because that's why they've been working so hard lately. However, over the past two or three weeks, because of Coach Verano and our maintenance staff, the fields have been put into a playable state now, particularly the baseball field. And so we will have our home games there unless we have a lot of rain. And if something like that happens, I have an assurance from the recreation park in Jim Brown, that that field will be available for us as we need it. All right? And we'll do everything that we can to make sure that games are held on schedule. But when you're talking about the springtime and rain, there's rescheduling that has to happen. And that, that is the nightmare of the spring sports season, is rescheduling. But I want to reemphasize this. Our home games are going to be played in Swain County. We have the ability to do that, and that will be happening. Coach, when is our first home game? Do you remember?
Well, it's, baseball is down for Thursday because it's going to rain Friday. Softball is Friday because policy damn has a game on Thursday already. And we're afraid we're going to lose that for it.
Okay.
And it's going to rain on this week.
And it's going to rain all next week. So this, this is what we've been, been dealing with. But I, I want to give a shout out to Coach Verano and also to our maintenance staff, who have worked overtime to get these things done. It's been exceptionally difficult this year. And, and we are looking at an annual plan, a calendar plan, so that we'll know exactly what we need to do ahead of time in the future. We have never had to, I don't know that we've ever had a problem like this before. Jerry says we haven't. But we're going to make sure that we take steps so that it doesn't happen again if there's any way we can prevent it. Okay? All right? Any questions about baseball fields?
I always have questions. If we moved, if in the event we'd have to move to the rec park, are we still able to charge the gate fee or do concessions? Any of those things that would help?
Gate fee becomes tougher because you got two new ways in. People may be taking money or walking to the hospital.
Yeah.
They're going to find a way around it if that hurts you. We don't have concessions right now, period. When it puts a new road in, we lost it. So that, that's gone. We, at our place, but we, we don't have no way to do a concession right now at the ball field right now with that. At the rec park, you can do it. You may make a little bit of money, but once they see your car, they're going to turn and go to the hospital park up there and walk down.
That's one of the difficulties of spring sports too, is, is trying to control the gates so that you can charge those fees. That's one of the reasons that sometimes we struggle to make our, our bills for umpires and for safety. And also, I don't know if you all know that, know it or not, but the, the rate for umpires and referees climbs significantly this year.
Sure.
Significantly. And so every gate that we can get, we're going to get.
I mean, it's worth, so it's worth trying to do, even if it's at that, even if it's at the rec park?
Well, I mean, we'll be back at the rec park. We play at the rec park probably every year, at least once or twice.
Yeah.
Baseball or softball. The field is soft.
Mm-hmm.
There's too much water there. There's too much water down there. You cannot blame for every, you still have water down there. There's just, that's where all the water goes, from the stadium, to the rooftops, to the road, all the way down there, underneath the baseball field and softball field, right field, soft and softball field. It's just, it's been like that for 20, how many years, Eddie?
20 years.
20 years. If you played on it, it was soft when it was there. It just depends on if you got lucky, you was going to a dry spot. So it's what you deal with.
That's something for us to consider also, as we're looking at any type of facilities expansion. You know, how, how can we counter this issue? What can we do? And we're beginning to have those conversations about what might be the appropriate use for that or somewhere else.
So Mark, are we building concession stand back now?
Yes.
And what about the restrooms?
Yes. And in just a little while, I'm going to ask you for money to do that. Okay? It's not going to be cheap, but it's not going to be outrageous. Right, Tommy?
We need to build that concession stand where it can't be broken into.
Well, we'll, we'll do that, but we also need to make sure that, that we look at, we placing that in the right place also. But yes, sir.
Yeah, we need bathrooms back.
And that will start in June, right?
Do we need to furnish some type of restroom down there?
We have porta-potties down there now.
So it won't be for this season? Is that right?
Yes.
In concession, we just won't be able to have anything this season for?
You know, if we, if we work from the perspective that we have right now, I don't know how we can, but that doesn't mean we can't look into that. I just don't know how to do that right now. And I'll be happy to have a conversation with people about that. Um, I just don't know how to do that right now and I'll be happy to have a conversation with people about that. And we've talked about food trucks and stuff like that, but it's difficult to get people to bring a food truck for something like that. Um, because they're not gonna make a whole lot of money. The, the overhead for a food truck is pretty low. I mean, it's pretty high.
And it's not really helping the, anything for us, so?
But we can talk about that. What we could try. I can't make any promises. Some people think when I say we'll try, it means it's gonna happen. No. We'll, we'll look at it. Okay? Any, any other questions? Alright, thank you all for that. Thank you Coach very much. Stay warm. Uh, we have the opportunity to present to you the night, the two thousand, did you hear me go nineteen? Two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar for your approval. You should have that in your pack. Um, the staff, uh, across the system has been asked to share their thoughts. And students at the high school have been asked to share their thoughts as well. I believe I shared some of those with you last month. Um, we have been able to design a calendar that will allow the completion of the first semester before Christmas break. That's been a monumental task. Uh, this was, has created a shorter first semester than the second semester. You will notice that there is a ten day discrepancy between the two. Okay? Our high school staff, who are most impacted by testing before Christmas. Now, I don't wanna say that they're the only ones that are impacted because the middle school is also impacted. But the high school is significantly impacted. They have said that they would be willing to work with a shorter first semester if they can complete testing before the holidays. And so we designed that, alright? I will also let you know that in my conversation with Mr. Kerr and some from the middle schools, they are in agreement. That ending the first semester before the winter break is best because of some other reasons, including transitioning students to new classes. Alright? Um, to make this happen, we have removed some elements in the calendar that have been there in the past. The most significant is the loss of the teacher workdays in early October. Uh, typically in the past, uh, the first Tuesday and Wednesday have been workdays. And if you go far, a little bit farther back, that Monday was a workday also. It kinda functioned a little bit like a fall break. Um, one of the primary reasons that those workdays were scheduled in that first week of October. Was so that we could maintain good school attendance with students during the Cherokee Fall Festival. Okay? We have removed that fall break, those workdays because we need as many instructional days as we can get in the fall. However. If a student attends the Fall Festival, their absence will be excused and it will be outside. Of the parent note expectations found in Board Policy forty-four hundred. Alright? We will consider that to be a cultural event. I want to say that again, so anybody who is listening, and we will publicize this, will understand. If a student attends the Fall Festival, their absence will be excused and it'll be outside of the parent notes found in Policy forty-four hundred. Okay? To make that happen, the parent or the guardian will need to provide a note stating that the fair was attended. The school system is responsible for four primary goals with the calendar. Uh, the first is that we have to have a minimum of a thousand twenty-five instructional hours or a hundred and eighty days. When San Patillo was superintendent, he moved us from a hundred and eighty days to a thousand twenty-five hours. It would be very, very difficult to get a hundred and eighty days with the regulations that are placed upon us by legislation. In their timeline. Very difficult, okay? Um, you will see that we have a thousand forty hours on the right hand side at the bottom of your sheet. We have to have two hundred and fifteen employee days, am I correct? Two hundred and fifteen employee days. Holidays are required on Veterans Day and Memorial Day. That's a mandate. And we have to have ten annual leave days for employees. Those are our four primary goals. Now, we have accomplished all of those. We have also been able to include the days for letters training that we are mandated to complete next year. You will see those on the calendar. We have removed all half days, Lisa.
Thank you.
And it's not just because of Lisa, it's because we heard from a number of people, including our administration, that half days are lost days. You won't find a half day in there until the end of the first semester and the end of the second semester. That's intentional. There are no two hour delays scheduled. Yes, unless there's a weather problem, and we can't predict those. We have included PLC days in this like we've had in the past. There are not as many as there have been and we really would like more. Our teachers and our administration are using those, um, to great benefit of the students right now. And if you would like for us to explain what PLC days are, I'd be happy to, but not right at this moment, okay? Um, we have provided an uncumbered workday close to the end of each quarter, which was a request. Now, the workday at the end of the first quarter is actually two days before the quarter ends, but it fits best right there. If you look at everything that's going on around it, okay? And that would, I think that will be okay. We have calendared two weeks for the winter break, but you'll notice that it's later than usual. That so we could get as many instructional days in as possible. And it lasts a little farther into January than we have normally seen. Uh, two weeks had, was a significant request from our staff. They also asked that we have an optional teacher workday before they come back from the winter break. Before they have students, cause I didn't give them one this, this year and that was an honest mistake we should have. We've met all of those pieces. Now, we have not created a legend in the center like, uh, we have in the past because we wanna look at it and make sure that it's very clear. I understand that there was a calendar that was floating around from the fall. And it floated through the winter and maybe was on some of our social media. And it was not quite as accurate as the calendar that we had prepared. And I apologize for any confusion that that caused, caused. The calendar never changed. It was just how things were created and publicized that caused the problem, okay? Uh, I didn't know that was out there. We tried to fix that as quickly as we did, alright? And so I present to you, uh, this calendar. It's gone through several stages and our staff has looked at it and it made comment on it. Uh, our administration has, uh, it's open to discussion with you. What are your thoughts?
And so if the Senate moves forward on what the House has passed, then it could even be a week earlier for the next year, right?
Yes, it could, um, but I will tell you what I continue to hear from people who have, um, a level of internal knowledge.
So it's not going to?
It's not going to go forward, okay? Uh, and there are several reasons for that and, and I understand their reasoning, uh, but. Let, let me do it. I, I don't wanna be political in here in any way. That's not my job. But our, uh, our legislator and our senator from, from Raleigh have really been supportive, supportive of calendar flexibility. Um, and we had a bill, I think I may have told you this, I don't know, that was actually approved a hundred and eleven to two. That would give Swain County and others calendar flexibility. And, uh, Representative Clampett helped, uh, present that. Senator Corbin has also put a bill forward in the Senate for the same thing, but it has been relegated to the Rules Committee. And once something goes to the Rules Committee, it very rarely makes it out. Okay? So I hate to be the voice of discouragement, Mitch. I just don't see a lot of hope there.
Mark, when will they do the end of semester test, the eighteenth, that week of the eighteen?
Yes, they will, they're, if, if everything plays the way that we hope that it does. Um, the first round of EOCs, uh, and tests will be the eighteenth through the twenty-first. And then that last half day will likely be May 20th. I believe that that is the plan, okay? And then we would look at something similar at the end of the second semester. Memorial Day really creates a little hiccup there, but we just work around it.
And we've already cemented June eighth for the graduation.
Uh, cemented, no.
No?
No. You can write it in a pencil.
Depending on, no.
Yes. I don't see any way Mitch, that we could have a graduation on the first. With the day before being the last half day for students. I think that there is a ninety-five percent probability that graduation would be the eighth. Unless we decide to step out of our tradition and do something in the evening. Which has been a conversation for several years now. Any other questions or thoughts?
I love that Easter and spring break are not together.
There, there is, uh, there are mixed opinions on that. I will explain to you that the reason that spring break is the second week of April is. In the Smoking Mountain Conference, I think I told you all this, I'm not sure, in the Smoking Mountain Conference, we try to keep our spring break the same. So that everyone knows to not schedule competition that week. Otherwise, we lose multiple weeks to schedule things and that really becomes a nightmare.
And so that typically is the second week in April, so, cause I know Easter's always different, so that kinda stick, that's what stays.
We try to keep it there, yes.
Okay.
And I've had conversations with, I think almost everybody, if not all of the superintendents in the, in the conference, and everyone is doing the same thing. Anything else? Alright. We'll ask for you to approve that if you would, um, in our action items. Um, I would like for you all to please put March twenty-third, if you can, on your calendar. Uh, we need to have a meeting that evening. We have several items, uh, that we need to work on. We can call it a work session. Uh, there will be some closed session work, especially for discussion of the safety plan. We need to look at that and begin to, to update that and we're going to make that an, an every other year event. There are other elements that we're probably gonna have to work on that night as well. I understand that, that Mr. McKinney is gonna be playing golf that day.
He's gone all week.
Yes. I was kinda, I was kinda, you will be playing golf that day. I should've used something different, okay? Well. You know, if we could convince him to cancel his vacation, but anyhow. Um, we need to meet then, uh, and I don't know that we can wait any later. Unless you all want to and we can try to get it in next week, but that's gonna be difficult. Your thoughts?
Sounds good.
Is that the week after next?
Yes.
No, I won't be. I go with golf trip next week.
That's SCC.
I'll be with SCC in Raleigh.
Okay. You could drive back.
I, I might do that.
Any, any?
What day is March twenty-third on?
It's Thursday.
Thursday.
That's the, the night that Toby could be there and he needs to be there for a safety discussion, okay? Is that okay?
I think so.
Alright, alright. Let's put that in and, uh, it's five thirty, a good time to start? Good, okay? Um, Ms. Snead wrote a grant to, uh, expand and, and strengthen CTE. She's in Boone tonight with a group of staff members, um, at a workshop. Um, and I will try to answer any questions that you have, but really she's the expert. You have two contract requests in your, in your board packet. Um, one is for various welding equipment pieces. And the other, uh, is to purchase a truck. Um, this is the first time that I recall that we've been able to, to look at doing this. Uh, this truck will allow CTE to transport students to job sites, um, because it's a four door. Um, it's a two fifty, I believe Ford. If I'm not mistaken, it's diesel. Uh, it'll also allow them to haul equipment and to tow a trailer. We have an, an FFA trailer. That they need to take places and it can, it can fit all those bills. At one point, we tried to furnish CTE with a decommissioned minibus and we found out that it would be more expensive to recommission the minibus than the bus is worth. And so Barbara was able to move in this direction. I can tell you that when I was principal at the high school, um, I worried about our carpenter students traveling to and from job sites because of how we were transporting. Uh, this allows us to overcome that, uh, puts the liability on the school system where it belongs. Um, and, and gives us a, a safe travel vehicle. The purchase, in my opinion, is very much worth the effort. Um, I've, I've shared these two items with our legal team and, uh, they said that, uh, Barbara has followed the correct protocol on this. And we're in good shape to approve these bids. Um, I, if you have questions, I would be pleased to try and answer them, uh, but I'm gonna be limited in, in the scope of my ability. Questions or thoughts? Okay. Um. About, uh, two years ago, uh, the General Legislature approved, uh, a buy-in and budget. And part of that buy-in and budget included some athletic capital funding. Swain County was appropriated about a hundred and four thousand dollars, am I correct? And very quickly, when we looked at that, uh, several of us decided that the best place to apply that money would be to a new set of bleachers at the high school gym. I don't know if you know it or not, but those bleachers that you sit on at basketball games and volleyball games were there in nineteen seventy-eight. It's the same set. We've been able to continue to maintain them by working on the tops of them, but as you go underneath of them and look at what they're sitting on, they're showing their age. The other side of those bleachers is that they are not ADA compliant like we need for them to be and there are no handrails. And so as we began to look at those items, it just became pretty evident with this a hundred and four thousand dollars. That the best move would be to replace those. We had intended to do this last summer, but we couldn't get our timing lined up to get it completed in the summer. Cause you can't do this in the fall and you don't wanna do it in the spring when you're having classes, okay? And so we dialed it back and we are ready to move forward now. The cost, take a deep breath, the cost of the bleachers is a hundred and ninety-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. Those bleachers, um, will require, because of the height of the bleachers. That, that, that crow's nest where we have Toby and Joe sit be removed. But, and that's a, that's a safety hazard in my opinion anyhow, because those are metal beams with hard edges. And it's pretty easy to walk into them. I don't know that anybody has. But these bleachers will require that coast, that crow's nest be removed. That means we don't have a media platform of any sort. So for five thousand dollars, the company that I'm going to suggest that we go with will, um, incorporate a media platform that's four feet by eight feet. Alright? The sum total of that is two hundred and four thousand dollars seven hundred. Uh, two hundred and four, two hundred. You know what I mean? That means we're going to need some more money. I'm going to request that you do two things tonight, if you would. Uh, first is that you will give me permission, uh, and approval to ask our, uh, our commissioners and our county manager to release a hundred thousand dollars. Out of our capital fund. So that we can complete the purchase of that. Uh, the second, that you approve the bid. Uh, we'll need the contract. If you approve that, we'll need to have the contract looked at by our lawyers. And then we would need to approve that contract later. We need to move on this quickly if we can though, because we need these installed in June. Alright? Do you have any questions about these bleachers or about this part?
Where was the hundred and four thousand coming from?
It's a, it is a, an allocation that came through the General Legislature for athletic capital. Did I say that correctly, Ms. Tredway? Every school system received an allocation and they're not all the same amount. I imagine it's tied to ADM or something, I don't know. Okay?
And is that, and that cost, does that, uh, encompass the removal?
Yes, um, and when they remove them Mitch, it is very likely that the, uh, metal parts underneath will not be salvageable. But the bleacher tops will be and they are going to take the wood, which I believe is yellow pine. And use it, uh, for other needs across the district, including some upgrades in some of our locker rooms. We still have the bleacher tops from somewhere else stored for that too. You know, if they could take them out and sell them, that'd be one thing, but when they take them apart, I don't think that metal will be salvageable. Questions? You guys are awfully quiet tonight. You're scaring me. The second part, um, we have significant needs at the Arts Center. Uh, the Arts Center is twenty years old and there are some elements that have not been upgraded since it was opened. And one of the elements that has not been upgraded are the curtains. Um, if you look at the curtains, uh, you will notice that there are sewn areas and there are areas that are ripped. And, uh, they obviously are faded. Also, uh, we are pro- Also, uh, we are probably out of date on the fire code with those, as far as the retardant is concerned. Joe has, uh, reached out to a couple of companies, and, uh, we have a, uh, a quote on a new set of curtains that don't, that not only include the front curtains, but all of the back pieces as well. Joe, what are those called in the back?
Well, the legs, the headers, and the rear, rear hitch travelers.
Okay. All of that. And for forty thousand dollars, we can replace all of that. There are some other needs. There needs to be more storage, and there also needs to be some painting that's done, because if you've been in there lately, you'll notice that the handrails have two different colors. Um, and it's time to just spruce it up. I am requesting that you give me permission to ask for fifty thousand dollars from our, uh, capital fund with the county to purchase curtains and to increase our storage capacity and also get painting done. Now, that's not the complete package that we need to do in there, but it's a start for us. We also need to look at carpet and some other things. But that will allow us to move forward on that. Do you have any questions about that? Joe's the guy to ask. And now, RL, let's talk about concessions and bathrooms. Okay? When the access road was built in the back, the concession stand was taken down. Does anybody here know where that concession stand, those bathrooms came from? They were? The circus. You're close. It was a riding rink in Murphy, and they were donated to the school system, and they've been, uh, transported and used for a long time. It was time for them to go. Um, and so Tommy is working on a plan right now, uh, with maintenance that accomplishes the replacement of that. The cool thing about it is, we can use our three-man team to work on that, and we can also hopefully incorporate our carpenter class in it. Okay? Now, we can't totally rely on the carpenter class because they have a limited time, but I think that it's a great project to collaborate on. Uh, we need to get started, we need to get started quickly, we need to get started in June. Um, I'm going to request that you allow me to ask for another fifty thousand dollars from the Article Forty-six Capital Fund, or the, the, the Capital Needs Fund. The first thirty thousand dollars of that is going to be to put in the slab, the block, and the plumbing rough-in. Okay? And then I can promise you it's going to cost more than that to complete it. So thirty thousand to get started, twenty thousand to start getting materials, and then I'll have to come back and ask for whatever else is needed, because we don't have an exact price on that just yet. But that will give us what we need, RL, and if everything moves well, we should have concession and restrooms in place by this time for next season. Okay? So I'm asking, overall, that you allow me to request two hundred thousand dollars from our, our capital fund. Uh, there is ample money in there, and we will be able to recover that in just a couple of months, um, I'm pretty sure.
Is that all going to be a single request?
Yes. I have already spoken to Kevin about that. Uh, now, he can't give me permission because the commissioners will have to agree to that, but he says he doesn't see a problem at this point. Okay? Questions on any of those? Thank you for your good attention.
Sounds good.
Appreciate that. Uh, Ms. Tredway, would you please come and talk to us about budget amendments?
Um, there's really not much tonight for budget amendments. For state public school fund, we do have an, um, an increase of about, um, a hundred and thirty thousand overall. And, um, we did receive twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars, um, for transportation for, um, fuel reserve that was applied for, based on, um, the amount of fuel that was purchased for the first half of the year. Um, we also received six thousand dollars for start, stop-arm cameras, um, to be installed in, um, a couple of our school buses. And then we received a hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars, and that's for the remainder of our school business modernization, um, for our software, for finance. For federal, we had just a small increase of twenty-eight hundred and seventy-three dollars, and that was just, um, an actual allotment over and above our, um, planning allotment for CTE. For special revenue fund, which is, um, Fund Eight, we had a couple of grants that we received. Um, we received sixty thousand dollars for, um, a DHHS, um, grant, and that will be used to purchase some supplies and some equipment for our nurses and also for some, um, some PE equipment. We also received, um, to-go grants for West Elementary. Um, those are for some outdoor, um, grants that they're using to do some field trips with, uh, fifteen hundred and thirty-five dollars. And, um, the CTE department, they, um, participated in the, um, the lots that they had, um, this winter, um.
Was that, what was the name of that?
Shadrack?
Yeah.
Oh, the Shadrack.
Shadrack, yes.
Yeah.
Um, and so they, um, helped with that by doing pre-sales and some gate sales, and received four thousand, one hundred and six dollars that they can also use, um, for local money to help with some, um, field trips and competitions for the CTE program. And that is it. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Those are all the discussion items, unless there's something else you want to bring to the floor. I would recommend that we go to closed session, I've got about three items that I need to share with you. Please, that need to happen there. Okay?
I have a motion going to closed session.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session pursuant to, uh, GS one forty-three dash three eighteen dash eleven for the following purpose. Under subsection A one, to prevent disclosure of privileged or confidential personnel information pursuant to GS one fifteen C dash three nineteen dash three twenty-one under subsection A five, to discuss the terms of a contract for employment and discuss items regarding school safety.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, hold on, favorite by show of hands? Going to closed session.
Since we are back from closed session, looks like it moves us into action items. I believe we'd have, we'd adjust it to have a budget amendment at A.
Yes, I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the budget amendments as presented by Ms. Tredway.
Motion, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Motion, James.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Rebecca Wiggins as instructional coach at Swain High School effective March 25th, 2023. Is technically she instructional coach or is she ITA?
She is instructional technology facilitator.
So we need to change the wording on that to not instructional coach, but instructional technology facilitator. It's a different kind of a job.
Do I have a motion with the amendment to instructional technology facilitator?
Motion.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Castellan McMahon as varsity cheerleading coach only, effective February 23rd, 2023.
Motion, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of McKenna Shaver as JV cheerleading coach only, effective February 28th, 2023.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation retirement of Catherine Outlaw as EC teacher assistant at Swain High School, effective July 1st, 2023. I know we have a lot of people who retire and resign and things, but Kathy has given her lifeblood in a lot of ways to the EC students at, at the high school. And I personally, personally regret seeing her leave, but I understand why she is.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation retirement of John Baldwin as custodian at Swain Middle School, effective July 1st, 2023.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, brush your hands.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Lanay Watson as teacher at Swain East Elementary, effective June 10th, 2023.
Will move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education grant the parental leave of absence for the remainder of the 22-23 school year for Nikki Stevenson.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education grant the parental leave of absence for the remainder of the 22-23 school year for Jennifer Marr. She works at West.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Austin Cook as an activity bus driver, effective February 20, 2023.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Michael Verano as an activity bus driver, effective February 28th, 2023.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Joshua Griffith as an activity bus driver, effective February 28th, 2023.
Will move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Jonathan Roper as middle school baseball head coach, effective March 1st, 2023.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Auburn Barker as after-school tutor for Gear Up at Swain Middle School, effective March 14th, 2023.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Motion passes.
If you want to deny the next one, I would be very happy.
Second.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation retirement of Sheila Bowers as teacher assistant at Swain West Elementary, effective July 1st, 2023.
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the February 13th, 2023 open and closed session minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the track ring funding request.
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the purchasing bids presented for the CTE department. That one is new.
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Motion pass.
This one is new also. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education permit the request for $200,000 from the Capital Needs Reserve held by the county. That would be for $100,000 for the bleachers, $50,000 for the arts center, and $50,000 to begin the process for the concessions and bathrooms at the baseball field, baseball softball field.
Motion.
Okay?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the bid from Learning Environments Incorporated for the new bleachers at the high school gym.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Motion passes.
Please note that those are, you're approving the bids, that's not the contracts, okay? That'll come to you soon as we can, and we need to move on those quickly, on that one especially, okay? Ladies and gentlemen, that is all of the action items. You see the dates of things that are coming up. Especially, I would include, I would encourage you to, to look at the dates for concerts and things like that. And we will let you know about the end-of-year events such as athletic banquet and all of the others as soon as we can. And Joe, would you please tell us what the dates are for the musical? Can you remember?
They are the Friday, the 24th, 25th, 26th, and then Friday, the 31st, April 1st and April 7th.
Those are not on here, and, and to nobody's fault, that's not what I mean, but that's going to be a pretty good show. And I'm, we need at our next meeting to do a shout-out to our thespian organization. It's, it's fairly new to the high school, but they competed regionally, then they competed at state, and we had several people who came back. The equivalent of drama state champions, and some of them have been, have qualified to, to compete at an international level now because of that. Now fortunately, the international competition is in Indiana, and so they're looking at taking some folks. That, that's, that's a significant step for our drama program.
And we bring them here?
We can do that, yes.
I think as many as we can bring like that, it helps.
And we probably should bring our winter track team and also Mr. Nadeau.
Tass.
Because they need to know that you appreciate them.
Right, absolutely.
Okay? Our next board meeting is supposed to be April 10th, that's spring break. I'll be in town, I imagine that some of you may not. And if you would like to move it, we can move it to the week before, or we can move it to the week after. What are your thoughts?
Any rush? Do I have it earlier?
Not, esp- I don't believe so, Jerry, especially if we are going to have a meeting in between now and then.
It's Monday after.
Monday after, which would be the 17th, April 17th. Do you see any conflict by April 17th? Okay.
Can you remind me what late graduation is?
10th.
January 10th. No, we're going to graduate in January.
Some people might.
Are we adjusting the 23rd?
You kidding? Let me see.
You all tell me what you want to do, okay?
I missed that one, didn't I?
Oh, the 23rd, good.
I need to check.
This month?
You said you'd come back.
I mean, you want us to change the 23rd?
I will not be here the 23rd.
Can I, can I, can I get with Toby and see when he'll be available? Because he's got to be part of that meeting.
Yes.
All right, so we'll, we'll try to move it to the next week.
Okay.
Will you be here the next week?
The next week, that, that's what I looked at, I can be here Monday, and then that Tuesday, I've got Southwestern, and then I'll be gone Raleigh with them for the rest of the week.
So Monday is your only available day on that week?
Yeah.
Okay.
Softball has a home game, so if you're looking for Toby, that's probably.
We might be stuck, Jerry, with the 23rd, okay? That's all, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your, your work tonight.
Got a motion?
Yeah, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
I've been down there, I've been going down there for.